Go ahead and call them in order to the poll roll, please.
Jennifer Harden.
Here.
Belinda Grassi.
Here.
Tom Heck.
Here.
Lori Wieske.
Here.
Jack Miley.
Here.
Will please rise to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I would like to remind everyone, this is the meeting of the Board of Education, held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. First up, I would like to make a motion to approve the July 28, 2020 Board Minutes. If I can have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Heck. Is there any discussion? Not call the roll, please.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Wieske.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Motion carried. And that takes us to special reports, Dr. Kales.
We have a special reports. We'll have some reports during the time where I speak.
Okay. Great. That takes us to old business. If anybody has anything. How about new business? All right. Easy peasy. Moving on. That takes us up for Board of Education Committee and Liaison Reports. First thing is the Superintendent Business Advisory Liaison. Once school starts, we usually get that started with that again. So hopefully we'll have an update on that come after the start of the school year. Curriculum and programming boosters. Mr. Miley.
No meetings this last month because there's been a lot of curriculum meetings. And we decided to give her a reprieve. But next month she's on.
Got it.
Finally a day.
Because yes, we'll be, we can do one at a time, for sure.
Everything else is done.
Great. Finance audit personnel legislative, Mrs. Grassi.
We haven't had any meetings since our last board meeting, but we did have a work session that centered around financial issues and reading of some of the financial reports that we get every month. So I have nothing else for you.
Excellent. Buildings and grounds operation alumni, Mr. Heck.
There were no meetings in August for either the buildings grounds or the alumni association. We will definitely have a meeting in September with, with buildings and grounds.
Policy and strategic plans, Mrs. Travis.
We have not had a policy meeting or strategic plans meeting.
Well, that was fast. All right.
Because we're not doing anything.
Yeah, right. Yeah. Super slow. All right, Dr. Kales, now it's your turn. Super happy to talk.
A lot of things going on. With this time of year, we rely very heavily on our directors and our staff to prepare for the new school year. As one would expect, it is challenging task under regular circumstances. This year is even more difficult, obviously. I've asked some of our administrators and directors to give a short three to five minute presentation on a particular topic or at least a general update of what's going on in each of their departments and the work they've done over the past several months. I've asked Prince, Lamute Principal Nick Orlando and Riverside Campus Principal Pete Leoxos to attend tonight's meeting so that they may share how orientation will work in each of the schools since a traditional orientation was not in the plans for the upcoming school year. And where's Mr. Orlando?
Right here.
Okay, behind the camera, I'm sorry. If you want to go first, Nick, that'd be great.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. With the Lamute, that up until just recently, we thought everything was going to be virtual. And in addition to that, we are still literally working on a schedule that changed completely from what our previous schedule was, was more of a traditional schedule. So what we're going to do is first we're going to have, we had planned on making preview of video of some kind. And that's still going to be available for maybe people who can't come. And it's going to be similar to what Riverside is doing. I talked to Pete about kind of what those guys are doing. We'll have some spots people could sign up for online in some type of online form, survey, genius. There's some, there's some things out there, but I need to explore those. It'll be for students only, not for parents. And so students will come in and they'll be able to kind of go walk up, see where their classrooms are, maybe see where the cafeteria is, where the band and choir room are. And it'll be kind of a walkthrough. They'll come in through the gym lobby where most of the students come in through right now. The vast majority of our students ride the bus, so I thought that was a good place for them to enter. And depending on when we do it, because right now, I couldn't give kids a schedule because they're not in the schedule yet. But they will be sometime soon. So once I know when that, I can say that, yep, schedules will be ready for them, then we'll, we'll set that date or whatever it might be. And it might be part during the day and part in the evening. So I don't have those kind of details to share with you because it's still going to depend on when I get those kids in the schedule. So if students come during the day, and I'll lay this out, they would not be able to go in classrooms because teachers are working. I'll just, you know, kind of say, hey, look, look, see where your room is at. Take a look where your locker's at. And then they'll have the, you know, that general setup. They won't be able to set up lockers or anything like that, like in the past. This is just to come in and see where their classrooms, you know, were going to be and maybe take a look at walking, walking that schedule. That's kind of it. We still have some, some detail work to get done because again, we started building the schedule probably less than two weeks ago with the, the changes that were made to lessen student movement. We'll have kids in cohorts this year, so kids will be with the same group of students throughout the day to help with that student movement piece. So to build that from scratch was quite an undertaking and we're, we're almost there.
Just if I could.
Sure.
So when, when students come into orientation, are they coming in as a, as their group or individually? I'm not, I guess maybe.
They're going to come in, I'll set up X number of students will be able to come in between nine and nine twenty. I'm making that up. Okay? So whatever, whatever that amount of students, that term, I think Pete's doing like groups of ten. So then they'll, you know, so it's going to be, parents will stay in the cars, kids will come in. It's going to be, it's going to be a walkthrough. It's going to be pretty quick. So it's not going to be a traditional orientation in any sense. It's going to give them maybe some comfort to look at, where are my classes at? You know, when they, when they come in.
What are you talking about too is the fact that instead of having a lot of transitions, it's modified to paper block, where you keep the kids more in the classrooms and less transition time. Kids will have access to lockers, but only in specific times of the day. And I think Pete's, you're doing fifteen students at a time.
Yeah. What we're doing basically is very similar to what Nick is doing. We're pre-recording a video. So if, if he were to take like what we traditionally do every year for orientation, we're going to pre-record it in snippets and put it into a video. So it'll have all the pertinent information that the kids need to know about, you know, how school operates, you know, the different, different rules, regulations, policies. And then we're going to email that out, okay? And we have a target date of August thirty first. So we're going to email that out to everybody by August thirty first. So kids and parents can see pretty much the whole presentation, okay? And we kind of earmarked September first and September third for students to come up here. So we're going to have groups of fifteen, fifteen students showing up. We have half hour time slots. We're going to have signup, some type of signup genius where the kids can go out and sign up. And they'll meet here in the lobby and we'll have, we're going to have different people taking the groups around. We have counselors, administrators, side students, the kids that are part of the leadership group. They're going to be involved. And pretty much they're going to go on a brief tour of the building and then they're going to let the kids walk their schedules, okay? And we're thinking, our schedules are being worked on relatively further along than, than Lamute is. Our target date to have those completed will be this Friday. So we're thinking that, that the kids will have their schedule by Friday. Then September first and third, they can have them to be able to walk the building.
So is that more for, you're talking about like the eighth graders?
Yeah, eighth graders.
Okay, so what about students that, let's say freshman that, you know, just their second year in the building, they want to be able to just do a quick walkthrough of their schedules? Are we allowing anything like that or is this just really?
We kind of just were targeting the eighth graders. I guess, I don't know, we could take a look at if there's anybody who wants.
Eighth graders should be students.
Yeah.
So we're going to be more reflective? We're not letting people in the building, we're going to be more flexible? I assume the first few days that these kids may still be, we all know you can still miss your classrooms and things like that. But we're still going to do that year.
Yeah. I would think so. If somebody, you know, if, if somebody wanted to come and walk the building, I can't, you know, if they call the office, I guess we can accommodate them. But this was kind of designed for the kids that are going to be coming up brand new to kind of ease their, you know, their, their stress and, you know, coming to a new building. So that's kind of like what we designed.
You're probably thinking like, why aren't we, why don't we have solid plans when we're already in the end of August?
I wasn't thinking that.
The issue is we're going to do this via, like a, a virtual, through the computers. And thinking about it, we, we started talking about that it'd be so much more effective if we actually had the kids come in. So I reached out to both of them and said, let's see what we can do about getting smaller groups in. Maybe we can have a couple more administrators or perhaps guidance helping and taking kids through. I think Pete and his administrative staff decided to do it on their own, fifteen minute, fifteen, twenty minute slots to get them through, at least to get an idea of what the layout is. And to be perfectly honest with you, even with some discussions with Lake County Sheriff's Department, they weren't really keen on having us do virtual tours and having that posted on for everybody to see. So that is one of the reasons why we're a little bit behind the eight ball. We'll get it done. And even if those people can't make it during those time periods, all they have to do is call and we'll see what we can do about providing at least some type of tour. They can even call central office, say, well, I can pick normal.
We scheduled time slots from nine o'clock in the morning. I'll wait till six o'clock at night. So we try to accommodate everybody.
So for Lamute, Mr. Orlando, sixth and seventh graders are getting lockers on. Typically those kids will come in prior to the school year, make sure they know how to open the lockers, things like that. How are we going to address that then with the seventh grader?
We're just going to, we're going to deal with that first few days of school. The teams are going to set up. The way we're going to do it is to keep kids social distance at lockers. We, we kind of have a, a plan and the teams are going to land, say in a one classroom of twenty-five kids. Because our classes right now are like twenty-four. We have, you know, twenty-eight, twenty-seven. We have one class of twenty-eight, I think. But anyway, they're going to be like A, B, C, D, E. Your A, B, C. And then in the, the other classrooms, there'll also be a group of A, B, C. So, okay, all the As, go to your lockers, you've got a minute. All the Bs. So again, they're spread out. They're not all jammed up like what, what normally be. So the teams, you know, in talking to Becky Saran and who's our union rep and also on the building leadership team and another person from Riverside Restart, we kind of came up with that idea to keep kids distancing. I said, okay, we could just schedule every fifth locker, you know, to do that. And they're like, just let us handle it in the teams. Like, okay, great.
So parents ask for Lamute, that high school, all the kids who are bringing their school supplies in their backpacks, they're not going to be, I know the high school won't have to do lockers, correct?
We're not doing lockers, no.
And, and our kids will be limited to lockers. Like they're not going to come in, again, normally kids will go to their lockers, then go to advisory or, you know, to get a pass to go to breakfast or stay in advisory. This year, go to the classroom and the teachers will tell you, you know, when you can go to your locker. And so again, we're really trying to limit that, that student movement.
Thank you. Next up is our new Transportation Director. I'd like to introduce Chris Ilner to the Board of Education. She's coming to Riverside as our Director of Transportation from the Akron Public Schools, where she's been a transportation specialist since April of two thousand seventeen. Before joining Akron, she was at Crestford for many years. I think since two thousand two?
Yes.
And she served as a bus driver and Transportation Secretary. She's a mother of two and a new grandmother as well, correct?
Yes.
Welcome. And I would thought that we could also have her provide the board with a brief update of where we are in respect to routing, some inspections I saw that were happening last few days, and general readiness for the upcoming school year.
Yes, so they, they did receive three of the new school buses that were coming in and those did get inspected the other day. As far as routing, I'm working on it very hard. There's a lot to do. There are some buses that have a lot of children on them. And we didn't change any of the bus routes this year due to the pandemic and then the unfortunate passing of Jim. So we decided to just leave everything as it is. So I'm doing my best to make sure there aren't an abundance of children on buses. But there are a lot of children that are doing the remote learning. So I've been going through taking them off the buses. So that's alleviating some of the, some of the kids on the bus. All the buses do have hand sanitizers installed on them. And all the buses do have a, a bottle of sanitizer that they will spray after the kids get off the bus. It's instant. It's twelve ounces, so, and it's non-aerosol, so it's legal for it to be on the bus. And they will make sure that after every route, they spray the bus down and, you know, make sure everything stays clean and that the kids are all wearing their masks when they get on the bus, on and off the bus. And I have worked with the, the high school about drop off. You know, they, they wanted to do it a certain way, so we're working together with getting that done also.
Of course, with, with the idea that we may have over a thousand kids that have chosen the remote route, which represents twenty-seven percent of our population enrolling, do you have the confidence that the, the school buses will see a noted reduction of riders?
Yes. Yes, definitely.
That's one of our concerns. We had discussions about this before. Obviously you were a director. And one of the concerns was that in order to preserve some type of social distancing, we would have a real hard time accommodating and transporting all the students that we have with the resources that we have in our district.
Correct. And, and that would be the same in any district. There would be no way that, you know, when this all started, I heard people say, well, you can only have twenty kids on the bus, every other seat. There's, there's just feasibly, there's no way for any district to do that. There isn't. They would have, everybody would have to buy new buses and hire new bus drivers. And we all know that those are hard to come by, so.
How are the inspections going? The board has made a commitment over the past several years to start providing our district with new buses and replacing them on a, on a rotation. So how are we doing in terms of?
Every bus that's out there has passed.
Oh, good.
Yes. And then the three new ones that came in, those are the three gas ones that they opted to purchase. And then the other ones, I'm not sure, I think, I believe there's two more coming? Two or three, two?
Two more.
But they haven't let us know when they would be in yet.
I understand that in, in some of the meetings I've had with other superintendents, other peer superintendents in the area, that all districts are facing a shortage of drivers.
Yes.
If, if someone was out there watching this and thought that they might want to become a bus driver, what, what would you suggest they do?
Well, first fill out an application, go take your test down at the BMV to get your temporary license. That's the biggest thing to pass that. They do have to pass a background check to make sure that they are legal to drive in the state of Ohio. And then we do the training. As far as that, they would have to pay for their temporary license. And then also too, when they do go for their test, they do have to pay for that also. So.
How long does the process take if someone doesn't have a CDL?
It depends on the person. When I went for mine, because I was still working, I could only do it on Saturdays. It took me two and a half months. Some people, it depends. If you, if there are drivers out there that have a Class Eight CDL that are truck drivers that pretty much know what they're doing, so it doesn't take them as long, maybe five weeks.
That's part of the issue that we have in any other position that we hire basically. They can start as soon as the board approves on, you know, custodial personnel, for example, can come in. Because of the training that's involved in becoming a, a bus driver, it's just a lot of time you're fully connected, someone behind the wheel almost, they already have their CDL.
Well, and now you add in, you know, the BMVs, you can barely get, I mean, I just went through like getting my sixteen-year-old his driver's license. I mean, these things are so backed up, just generally speaking too. So I'm sure it's going to be even more of a hassle trying to get people through quickly, at least.
Does the board have any questions for Chris?
No, but welcome.
Thank you.
Great to have you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I do have a follow-up question though. Assuming that kids will be on the bus because of online, but I'm assuming, I've been hearing parents say they won't put their kids on the bus, they're going to drop them off. So are we preparing for additional drop off traffic at the schools?
Yeah, we don't know what that's going to look like. We're trying to, we're trying to develop some type of program where the, the kids aren't getting dropped off too early because they have to go somewhere and there has to be supervision. So we're kind of trying to feel this thing out to see what we can do, especially up at the high school in different locations. And it's going to be a challenge. I mean, it really is. We're not going to know really how this is all going to work until we start doing it. I, I received a call from one of our elementary principals today that wanted to go to a couple of schools that are already in session to see what arrival and dismissal look like and see if there's any secrets to what they're doing. And I said, fine, just go. I mean, that's the advantage of, of starting September eighth. We can learn from people's mistakes or the district's mistakes or some of their victories. So I'm curious what it is. I'm going to cut her loose too, if you don't mind. She gets here awfully early, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome. Thank you.
There you are. I was going to do, I was going to do your part myself.
It's not good.
Well, you were. Well, let me see back in your teeth. You're so, you're so little, you're so little, I missed it.
Probably just from here up.
All right. So I'd like Dave Ward, I'd like Director David Ward, Assistant Kim McDonald. I'm busy getting our fall sports team ready for the season. Much of the guidance received, it doesn't seem to remain the guidance as many changes have occurred over the span of even days. We did get some type, we did get some guidance from our governor, Governor Delancey, and it allowed us to at least move forward with respect to our upcoming contest for fall sports. Mind giving an update, Dave? I have some, I have some of the guidance too.
Sure, yeah. And I think I'll just kind of give a little synopsis if there's questions. I mean, I'm not sure anymore, just all that information in my head, like who wants to know what and what's needed to be known. But, you know, the nice thing is we've been working all summer with some, some guidelines, some things that we have to follow, some protocols. So the latest order was simply cranking them up and allowing any of the contact sports to kind of be on pace with the non-contact sports because non-contact had been already competing and being able to do that. Now the contact sports, we're able to now be involved. And one of the biggest things that was talked about in, in the new order was capacity, capacity of the venues. And, you know, three big numbers that are out there for what we need to worry about is, well, fifteen percent. Fifteen percent is a starting point. So for our fieldhouse and our stadium, fifteen percent equals eight hundred twenty-five people in the stadium. And the fieldhouse equals two hundred forty. If we host cross-country, which we are going to still try and, and host a couple of cross-country meets for our kids, that is a limit of a hundred fifty people per race. So capacity's a little different, a little more open air. And as long as the social distancing is not, is crazy. But the biggest thing that, that we were made aware of is the Ohio High School Athletic Association has been given the green light from the governor's office to hire as many compliance officers as they can to be funded by the governor to do secret checks and come in with a checklist and whatnot. So, so the grounds, I mean, so it's, it's going to be, we've been out there looking at taping off bleachers and just doing as much as we can to, to repair as we move forward. Ticket policy as well. We kind of agreed on a basis at WRC, the conference, that if you are going to any place as a visitor, two tickets is the allotment per individual participating. No coaches necessarily. Even when you're talking about, you know, the gymnasiums are slightly different size, but the stadiums are a much bigger discrepancy based on visiting stands. So we would go and most of, you know, we have a beautiful stadium. Our visiting stands are almost as equal to our home stand. So we don't have as big of an issue, but others, you know, are, are one, one-third of the size of, of our visiting stands. So we just said make it equal across the board and, and two tickets. And then, you know, at home, just do what you can do. You know, talking, talking to Dr. Kales and, and Mr. Leoxos and a couple others, you know, I think our goal is to try and get as many people there as possible while still following the passing guidelines and trying to make executives possible amongst participants and, and everything else. So, so those are some things that we're working on. We've already hosted a couple of events. Soccer wise, those have gone very well. We are not going to have any money exchanged at the game or contest or whatever itself. So everything we've done pre-sale through coaches and directors. We're going to do weekly. We're not going to get out ahead and try and sell a pass. We're not, because we don't have to refund. You know, because we don't know what's going to go on with the unpredictability of, of the entire fall season. And no matter where you go, you're going to have to have a ticket that will have been issued by us. If you go to a visiting place, we are going to issue the ticket before the contest in the visiting place. We'll have a picture of what we issued so they know what they're accepting. You know, same thing when visitors come to us and then our home, home venues, same thing. So if you do not have a ticket that's been issued ahead of time or bought ahead of time, then you're not getting in and nothing will be sold at the gates. That's some of the ways we're trying to minimize, you know, spread and congestion of lines, everything. Just can get right in, just get your ticket and go.
Yes. One of the more important things, at least in my mind, is how about concessions? Is it just, is it just plastic or is it cash too?
Cash can be done too, but how we're going to, how you work around that. And let me also preface by saying, the restaurants and bars, under their order, kind of concessions fall into that too. So, so it's not necessarily in the new director's order for the competition of athletics, but they refer you to the restaurants and bars. So you kind of take all your guidance from there and then you kind of common sense it with what you have. So what we've done to fortify compliance, you know, opening the multiple windows in the concession stand. We've ordered stickers for the ground. Some people are going to maintain a social distance based on a visual key on the ground. At each window will be two people. One will handle money only, one will handle food only, and they'll never cross over. They'll all be required to wear masks. Most of the items for purchase will be prepackaged, pre-made. So it'll be no nachos and hot dog, nothing like that. I know Dr. Kales, Chick-fil-A is supposed to be there Friday night. I talked to Cindy Mahoney from the band, so they, they are going to try and bring that in on Friday. But, but again, all prepackaged and pre-made. So that's kind of what we're looking at for concessions.
Well, it's sort of clear too for people that tickets are required for all, it's not just varsity. It's seventh grade all the way through, but we're not charging. There's not a fee because we don't typically charge seventh grade through JV. So if you are listening to that.
Correct. Everything that we've not typically charged for, we continue to not charge, but we will still distribute the tickets just so we can manage capacity and know who's, how many we've got.
Yes, we're working on senior night as well, correct?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, so senior night for band cheerleaders, football, boys' cross-country, girls' cross-country, golf and girls' tennis, we're going to, we're shooting for this Friday. You know, we shoot, it's happening. I mean, we're not shooting, it's happening, it's our schedule, yes. You know, everybody's aware, we want to get out ahead of it, obviously, and make sure that the kids be experienced. Both soccer programs and volleyball, they both have their own venues to be able to do that. So they're going to go and try it. The boy soccer is actually trying this Saturday versus their home match versus Metta. And then girl soccer soon and volleyball soon into September, top of the cook fire. So we're all going to try and get this done in, in easily the first half of our season, if not earlier, just to make sure we get that experience for the kids and the families, just in case something happens.
Are people who are working in concessions going to need a ticket? Are they coming in the, how?
I have that, some of the guidance here, but any of the workers and any of the athletes are not considered spectators? They're not in that number?
Yes.
But how will they know? Because you're working, that you're a worker.
So, so we'll still give them a ticket, that's how we know. So the, the band director, Schwartz, or whoever, we'll give them a ticket. They just won't have to pay, won't have to worry about it. So, and, and we'll know in our allotment, okay, we were going to give a hun, you know, three hundred twenty-two, now three hundred twenty-seven. You have four workers per band. So good question. But yeah, we'll just keep track of that.
We also had a question and only, I received only one of this type asking that because there's a shortened season, whether or not we're going to adjust paid participation fees. And I said, not at this point do we expect to do that. Obviously if something's changed drastically, it'd be another discussion maybe, but at this point, I want the board to know that I said we, we don't plan on doing that. Did you have anything else? I'll just go over a couple of these things real quick.
No, yeah, great, please do. Does anybody else have any, any other questions or? Yes, just not.
Yes, just not. I was, uh, wondering like, it's two tickets per athlete only that are getting in to these events, seven through twelve, correct?
No.
Participants.
But no, not, not seven through twelve though.
Okay, cool. Yeah, if we can, go ahead.
Well, no, yeah, seven through JV is four tickets. We, we don't.
Oh, the smaller, the younger kids?
Yes, and in volleyball, I think we did the numbers, we can probably do four as well because we're going to clear the gym between each levels match, so we can get away with that as well.
So seven to twelve are getting four tickets now instead of two?
Seven to JV.
Pretty much, pretty much.
I need to, I need to jump in on that. That is not.
Depending on the sport.
Yeah, I was going to say, you're missing only to have fifty-seven kids or something, or fifty-seven participants, so it's, it's not four at our, at volleyball.
That's what I'm asking about.
Yeah.
Well.
It's two tickets per.
So national, she was sweeping, you must have known.
I'm sorry, yeah, I, I just didn't want you to think it was four. It's not a.
Okay, so, so what is not, anything that will move or just?
Maybe fo- football could be that, maybe. I, I don't.
We got two tickets, we got four for each, for something.
Could be interesting.
Correct.
Yeah.
It depends on the sport, number of participants in the event.
Yeah. Our team just can't get there.
Yeah, everything's a little bit different.
Well, the changes too for versus if, like for our away games for football, we only get two tickets.
Well, I'm asking about home events that, you know, there's, there's some situations out there that we have separate families, separate parents, that don't get along. And two tickets might infringe on one or the other seeing the event. Four was the perfect answer, but you got, you're, you're limited.
The governor gave the numbers, we haven't, you know, imagine the, the gym is dictating how many people can come.
Right.
I did, uh, I did send an email to someone who was inquiring about some adjustments, uh, that could be made uh, to a traditional play-by-play football game. And, uh, in it, I did mention that even though in, in, at the varsity level for football, everyone gets two tickets, that we still have some remaining tickets for extenuating circumstances. Perhaps, uh, relatives coming in from out of town or, you know, a grandparent wants to see a game. Um, we, we have those, we just don't have a, a lot of extra, but they do have the ability to call, uh, Mr. Bores and request, uh, additional, uh, tickets. We just don't want to make sure that it's not the same people every week after week, um, asking for those, uh, extra tickets. But we're going to do what we can to provide, um, you got to imagine too, not every, even if two tickets are filled out, not all of them are going to be used. It's just like graduation. Every year we get four tickets, everyone, everyone scrambles, they want more and more and more, and then when we get at, uh, Menifin Arts for the ceremony, you'll see a lot of gaps and not everybody uses the tickets. And parents do have the ability to exchange a part of their tickets as well. Uh, I wouldn't suggest selling them, but you know, if they're not going to use it, to give it to somebody. And, uh, let them, let them attend. Also, even at away games, since bands are not permitted to travel to away games, depending on the size of that away venue, um, those tickets will all go to football parents and cheerleading parents. Bands not going? Um, you know, band only plays into this at home games.
Okay.
Yeah. Alright, so I, I took the, um, uh, opportunity to condense some of the things that were coming out of the guidance through, uh, the governor's office, from the governor's office. Just some interesting things to, to take note. Number one, there were seven hundred and nine member schools originally planning to play eleven-man football. And out of those seven hundred and nine, sixty of them have either postponed or canceled football due to the pandemic. Um, in terms of media coverage, they are, um, they are encouraging media members. Uh, they don't want them to be counted and fast toward the capacity because they know that if the media is there, it gives more people the opportunity to, to see the event. We are looking at different, um, ways to possibly stream, um, games. Uh, Mr. Carabine has been doing some footwork on that with our new tech, uh, department. Game management changes in football, they're only going to have sixty players on the sidelines. And instead of going, what is it, from the twenty-five to the twenty-five, now from the ten to the ten, right?
Correct.
So we have more space and, and Mr. Bores, our coach Bores is going to put, uh, markers down where students are supposed to be uh, throughout the game. Now, it is difficult to have sideline management, especially if we score and people get all worked up and crazy, but we're going to do the best we can to try to keep the kids in their locations throughout the game. Um, but it is being spread out now even further from the ten-yard line to the ten-yard line. Coaches, players, medical staff, game workers, media, and spectators must wear facial coverings at all times other than the twenty-two players on the field of play. Halftime's are shortened to ten minutes, that's one of the reasons why away, um, bands aren't coming, uh, they're not traveling. And this is kind of interesting, officials will have limited contact with the ball. The players on the offensive team will handle the ball and take it to the huddle room. And then the umpire will place an orange bean bag at the spot where the ball is to be stamped, so they're not touching the ball. And each player, um, athlete should have his or her own water bottle. And players and coaches from visiting teams should not use the locker room. Pre-game handshakes with captains and officials aren't going to happen, and post-game handshakes are not permitted. I'm assuming it'll be something like baseball, just tipping your hat wave and.
Yeah.
Um, playoff format, schools must inform OHSAA of their intention to participate in playoffs by September, uh, seventeenth. And schools may withdraw from that decision up to September twenty-fourth. Playoff games will be held Friday and Saturday nights, October ninth through the tenth. Um, divisions one, two, three, and seven are Friday night and all the rest of them are Saturday night. Um, schools that are eliminated from playoffs or choose not to enter the playoffs have the option to schedule additional regular season contests through Saturday, November fourteenth. They can only have a maximum of ten regular season, uh, contests. We came up with the eight hundred twenty-five capacity in our stadium because we have fifty-five hundred, uh, seat capacity. If you multiply that by point one five or fifteen percent, you get eight hundred twenty-five for capacity. Um, Governor DeWine has asked, uh, OHSAA to assemble a large team of inspectors to ten games. That's why we're going to have a compliance office at each event to see something that might not be right. They'll let us know and we'll do whatever we can to rectify it immediately. Those are just some of the items that are opted, that are different than what they would be in a regular, uh, school year, season. Does anyone have any, uh, questions for Coach Bores?
Good luck this week.
Thank you very much.
Alright. Um, lastly, I got Dr. Malakar, she's been instrumental in the planning and development of, uh, two instructional delivery models and the professional development opportunities for staff for this upcoming year. Um, as I said before, this time of year has been really, really challenging and her organizational skills and commitment to the district, uh, should be noted. She's been working very hard, um, putting together frameworks of different things and models and then sharing it with the rest of the administrative team, and we're kind of getting together and fine-tuning what we need in order to start a successful school year. Uh, these types of tasks are in her wheelhouse and she's good at it. And I've asked her to update the board on our work thus far for preparing for an unconventional opening.
Thank you. So I don't, I don't even know where to begin to, to give you an update. So I guess the, the biggest thing that I want to talk about is the fact that Riverside is, is delivering two complete programs. So unlike other districts that, um, are, are choosing to zoom in, and I'm not, I'm not saying anything negative, I'm just saying other districts have chosen to zoom in remote students into the classroom. We decided from the beginning that we were going to run two programs. I don't know, Mrs. Harden and Mr. Hack, if you remember me proposing this to you, it was graduation and we were on the stage and everybody at that point was kind of, no, we're coming back, we're all, we're coming back in person. And I said, what if we can run two complete parallel programs? And you two said, huh, okay, well, we might be okay with that. So we are, we are doing it. We have built two complete programs. I use a phrase, I don't know if I made it up or if I stole it from someone. Um, nothing builds a team better than digging a ditch together and we are digging, digging the biggest darn ditch right now at Riverside. But it has been a group effort and it is, it is starting to come together. So we finished this week, um, placing all of our staff. So we have, um, our in-person staff and we have our Remote Learning Academy staff. We will, I am, I'm actually really proud to say, I, I said this in June and, and I will continue to say it. I felt a certain obligation in, in our discussions in central office. In addition to being, um, our job being to provide an education and to teach students, we also are an employer and we had an obligation to, to be mindful of what our teachers needed and what our staff needed to feel safe and to feel comfortable coming back to do their job. And so we offered the Remote Learning Academy in those positions to teachers who either had a medical need at first and then teachers who volunteered. And I'm, I'm really actually proud to say that we were able, out of thirty-seven people who either had a medical reason or who requested to teach remotely, we were able to place thirty-two of them, which is eighty-six percent of the people who either needed to or asked to teach remotely, we were able to place them in those positions. So I, I, it's something I'm, I'm really pretty proud of because I think we met the needs of our staff really well. We also had some teachers who would have preferred to stay in person that we had to place remote and that was because of certifications. So we got to a point trying to staff, you know, like I said, two completely separate programs, um, where we did have to force transfer some people. I would say out of those people that I had conversations with, ninety-eight percent of them have, have worked really well with me or with the building principals in adjusting to their new positions because some of them just found out this week what they're teaching. We do have some remote teachers at the high school who still don't have their schedule quite set yet. That's because in addition to me building two complete programs, that means we had to redo the entire high school schedule and the entire remote schedule. Like Mr. Orlando said, they rebuilt the entire Lamuth schedule to be a block schedule to minimize, um, student movement throughout the day. So there has been a lot of, of, a lot of work, tireless work going on by a lot of people in the district to make this happen. So I'm, I'm really proud to be a part of that. It's been a really good joint effort by not only the teachers' union, but Opsy. You know, our classified staff has stepped up, they are willing to work outside their job descriptions to meet our needs and to fill some gaps where we have and, and help out with some in-person stuff where we need extra staffing. So it, it, as difficult as it has been, it has also been an interesting journey because I think, like I said, it, it has built some relationships and some bridges that have been really cool to be a part of. Um, high school schedules should be released possibly by the end of this week is what we're hoping. I think we're going to be able to do some of our AP classes, if not all of them, through Zoom. That was also, um, teachers agreed to that, um, who teach those classes. So I think as long as we can accommodate it in the schedule, we're going to be able to do that. Um, remote schedules will be a little bit more limited. They won't have, uh, nearly as many electives to choose from. And, um, elementary students will not have electives to start the year. I'm hoping that we can maybe phase that in later, but right now, just to get the schedule and get their academics done, that's what we'll be starting with. So that's, that's the biggest piece of what's going on right now. The second thing is, um, teachers start back tomorrow, so we are, we are good to go. And they, we have eight days, which seems like a lot of time for professional development. Um, but there's a lot of stuff to do. There's just a lot of work this year, a lot of changes, a lot of work they need to do together um, and individually to, to be prepared to greet students on the eighth. So that's kind of where we are.
Can you address grading?
Grading will be done in the traditional sense. So we will have, we will be, go back to typical A through F grades, um, typical assessments, homework assignments, things like that. Students in the remote program will also get A through F. So it will be back to typical grading. Also, attendance is now mandatory. So, and, and I will say this, regardless of what happens two weeks, three weeks, or two months from now, attendance is mandatory this year. That is a, a state mandated thing. So we go back to, so it's not, if you feel like getting into the Zoom class, you can. We will be taking attendance. If you miss so many days, you will, you know, the report will go to the administrator. The administrator will make the phone call. If attendance doesn't approve, then, improve, then we file truancy. So grades go back to normal for everyone, regardless of what platform you're in. And attendance is mandatory for everybody, regardless of what platform you're in.
Ready?
Mm-hmm.
Has the state addressed standardized testing this year?
No, we're loading up kids for third grade testing in October. So I don't really know how that's going to work, so we're just kind of plugging along, right Chuck? Doing what they ask us to and, and wait to see what happens.
To be determined.
Any other questions? I almost forgot, I have Michelle Gifford here too from Food Service.
She's a nice little like.
And being forgetful, this, this is, this is a testament to her program because a lot of times, uh, she doesn't need to be supervised in a, in a, in a really tense manner because she runs the department so well that sometimes you don't even know that she's there. But that's, that's a compliment to, to Michelle. But, you know, she's going to provide a, she's going to provide an update as well. She was instrumental in providing families, uh, with the opportunity for lunch throughout our school closure. And I would not be giving Michelle appropriate to do if I didn't mention how committed she was and her intent to continue that service to our district's families. Uh, she put a lot in, uh, it's the short amount of time her and her staff, and they knocked it out of the park. And the one thing about Michelle is, and I'm not kidding you, no matter what I do, if I, if I don't even give her a lot of time to get something together, she does it, she never complains. At least to my face, she doesn't. I don't know what she does after she walks away, but she just gets it done. And she's done a great job for us. She has some stats she wants to share with the board real quickly over the past couple of months and what the numbers look like in terms of lunch served.
Um, so the first thing that you guys can see is we had three, three teams, three buildings, um, Fairport Harding, Riverview and Buckeye. And between those three buildings, um, they served over seventy-five thousand meals from March seventeenth, um, until, well, tomorrow will be the last day. Um, and you can see the numbers went up. Obviously, March, you know, was just a week, so it was low. Um, but if you look at June, I mean, we topped out at eighteen thousand seven hundred meals for the month of June. They, the ladies were hopping for sure. Um, so they, they became creative, you know, uh, some of the meals that we put together because they were for three-day packs, two-day packs, five-day packs. For students, um, they would take, you know, frozen individual pizzas and we would put things, you know, together with just a note. You know, heat to a hundred sixty-five degrees, you know, so that way they didn't just get peanut butter and jelly, they didn't just get a turkey sandwich, you know, they had some variety of things that sometimes they get during the school year. Um, and I have to say, this is huge. Um, we did this through, from March seventeenth until tomorrow. I have not had one single person complain about a meal they received. And I, I mean, I don't even know how that happened. Um, you know, because in any given week, someone is calling, you know, me to complain about something. And nobody. Uh, we got thank you notes, um, you know, a parent dropped out doughnuts yesterday to Buckeye Elementary to thank them, so it was a really good experience. It was good for my staff, um, it was good for the district. Um, to start the school year, a couple of things, we pared down our menu. It's going to be fairly simple. We normally send home a printed menu with the elementary families. We are not doing that this year because I could not in good faith commit to a year-long menu knowing that some of our suppliers, you know, may run out of things, we might have to change things. So we do have a digital menu program called Nutrislice, it's on the website, and parents are just going to have to get used to utilizing that, um, to see what's on the menu. And I'll be sending stuff home, you know, so they know how to use it and are aware of it. We are using a lot more disposable packaging, you know, so students don't have to touch anything, um, disposable. We're doing individually wrapped, you know, barbecue packets, ranch packets, all that kind of stuff, individually wrapped silverware. We are eliminating the use of the pin pads. Uh, we purchased scanners for kids six through twelve. Um, John Renwick in the IT department has come up with a way to have the students barcode in Infinite Campus, transfer to their Google Drive, so when they come through the line, they can just hold their phone under the scanner. So nobody has to click the scanner, nobody has to put in a PIN number, should be seamless.
What if they don't have a phone?
Then the cashier will just put in their last name.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we have that option, it's just we didn't want them touching the PIN pad. And that number's pretty small, especially up here, but it, it does happen that we have kids that don't have one. We are using a pre-ordering system through that menu program. So on campus, students and staff, and at Lamuth staff, will be able to pre-order their lunches. So this is going to alleviate waste. You know, we're going to know by 9:00 AM how many chicken patties they have to make and how many pizzas they need to make. And that's going to be prepackaged by lunch period. So when a kid comes through the line, they give their last name, we give them their bag, they pick their milk, they scan, they go. One of the really nice things about this, a testament to our administration, is we have no idea how this is going to work, how it's going to look. And I'll tell you, Mary Mattern up here was a little nervous about coming to work on September 8th with this whole new program. She does amazing things, but, but I was afraid she might quit. So Dr. Malacher had this great idea that on two of the PD days, the staff is going to utilize that pre-ordering program. And my kitchen staff will come in and will print the orders, we'll see, you know, how it looks on the backend and they can get some of their operations down. Obviously, it won't be as large, you know, a turnout as for the students, we're hoping, but it will still be a huge help to them to be able to do that.
So what happens when a kid has forgotten to order their lunch because they're going to forget?
They're going to forget, yeah. So we have, we're going to have both lines on campus open. And one will be for pre-order and the other will be à la carte. So we will obviously accommodate anyone who wants to eat. And then for the remote orders, yeah, we're still working on that. We've sent out a survey, so far the numbers are really, really low on the families that say they're going to utilize, but the response has also been low. So it's really 1,100 people, we've gotten 130 responses and 70% say, no, we're not going to use meals. But that's still a very small number. So I'm just waiting, you know, a little bit longer till we can break that down and determine where we're going to distribute those meals, you know, which buildings, how many days a week. And then I also wanted to say, going back to the meals we served over the summer, administrators were really helpful. We had principals who delivered meals and who helped, we had teaching staff who came in and helped volunteer. The administration team here was always available if I had a question. It was really a, a team effort, you know, for something that we've never done before. It really came together pretty well.
We also had a mention for lunch period at the campus and also at Lamuth, correct?
That's correct.
So we lost people, we didn't have to pay for the time.
Michelle, these were all free meals over the summer, were they not?
Correct, so over the summer, there were waivers put in place that, non-congregate feeding waivers. So students didn't have to stay in the location, they ate the meal, parents could pick up. And they were all free, so anyone who came, not even in the district, from age zero to 18 could get a free meal.
Amazing.
Any questions?
That's awesome, thank you.
And in conclusion of my report, I want to say on behalf of myself and the central office staff, I wanted to thank the board for providing lunch for us just past Friday, it was very generous and it was very good. Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
End of my report.
Thank you.
Yes. Alright, Ms. Blacker.
Alright, just have a few updates for tonight. The Bureau of Workers Compensation has been kicking around the idea of doing another billion-dollar rebate back to public employers. They just did one back in April, if you remember, where we got back $218,000 in premiums. So this next premium dividend that you're talking about will be equal to 100% of your 2019 premiums. So it's about $159,000 for us if that goes through, gets approved. And my understanding, if that was to occur, we receive that refund back in, I believe, October.
Sorry, how much?
It'll be about $159,000 or so. It'll be the third billion-dollar rebate in the last, since 2019, just last year. We also received, the Bureau of Workers Compensation purchased 20.6 million masks for public schools and entities. They, we received about 3,400 masks at the end of July, it will be distributed to our employees. There's talks of a second round of 23 million more masks, but there's plenty of purchasing that will be distributed at a later time. On top of that, we also received an allocation through the ESC, the Western Reserve, our Educational Service Center, we just received yesterday, 5,700 masks from them. That'd be for students and staff, to get those distributed out to the individual buildings. On Friday, we applied for the Broadband Ohio Connectivity Grants, I've seen that in the news in recent weeks. There was $50 million available. The issue with the grant is it was, it was, it's for public schools, charter schools, STEM schools, ESCs, vocational districts, and non-public schools, so 1,798 entities eligible to apply. We applied for 20 wireless hotspots and nine wireless access points to extend our wireless into the parking lots through work with John Redwick. The issue with the, the hotspots is the grant only covers the service through December 30th of this year. So we purchase these hotspot devices, usually it's required, your service to purchase it that will, then the grant can only cover through December 30th, not December 31st, it's only December 30th. So anything that we get through that, we have, you know, we get about four months covered, the rest we'll have to pay. We can either use our own general fund or possibly other care spending. Those applications we reviewed this week and were announced next week. And I understand there's well more than 50 million applying for, so everyone's award, if awarded, will be reduced based on, you know, proportion of who applied. And the last thing I have is, you know, we've probably all seen the news, the controversy with House Bill 6 with the periodic power plant and all that going on with Larry Householder being, you know, no longer around the Speaker of the House. Well, Bob Cupp became the new Speaker of the House, and if you recognize that name, remember the Cupp-Patterson School Funding Formula? He co-sponsored a new formula that didn't make it into the current budget. That's going to start being looked at again, possibly for the next budget. A new, with House Bill 305 looking at a substitute one, tweaking that a little bit. So we're supposed to have, you know, committee hearings in the next few months on this news, on the new school funding formula, and maybe there'll finally be some progress going forward. You know, coming up in, you know, after the first year is now state buying budget time again. And obviously with all the coronavirus and economic impact, it's going to be a very interesting time to, for them to decipher what the next budget will be. But the goal is to have something ready by September when they come back to start, you know, deliberating on that new funding formula. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. That takes us to public participation, anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topics, comments are limited to three minutes. It takes us next to consent agenda, consent agenda provides for more efficient use of time. Any board member can remove the consent agenda item to be discussed and voted on individually. The first one up is finance and audit.
Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the finance and audit. Consent agenda is recommended by the Treasurer, items A through I. Does that second?
Thank you. Do we have any discussion on those?
I would like to just thank the donations that we've received. We received a donation from Gem Construction to the Veterans Memorial. If there's no other discussion, can we call the roll?
Lori Knessky?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Jennifer Hardin?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Hagg?
Aye.
Motion carried, personnel?
Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda as recommended by the Superintendent, items A through H.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on those items? If there's no, can we call the roll?
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Jennifer Hardin?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Hagg?
Aye.
Lori Knessky?
Aye.
Yeah, we also have items, yeah, sorry. We also have item J, the athletic supplemental contracts to be recommended for approval. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion on any of those items? Alright, if no, can we call the roll?
Jennifer Hardin?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Hagg?
Aye.
Lori Knessky?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Motion carried, buildings and grounds?
Motion to approve item A listed on the buildings and grounds, agenda is recommended by the superintendent, may I have a second please?
I'll second.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Knessky. Any, any discussion? Alright, can you call the roll please? Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Hagg?
Aye.
Lori Knessky?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Jennifer Hardin?
Aye. Motion carried. Takes us to the Board of Education update, if anybody's got anything?
Just want to wish our teachers and staff and students good luck in their upcoming birthdays.
And thank you guys for everything you're doing, I know it's been an absolutely crazy couple of months and we appreciate you. I know our families appreciate you and the kids and all that, so. I know my kids are actually excited to go back to school, I can't believe it, it's amazing. It's been a long time, yes, it's time. So thank you guys for everything. Alright, if there is nothing else, our next meeting is going to be a work session on September 16th at 6:00 PM. Regular business meeting, September 29th at 7, which is a rescheduled meeting. With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:04 PM, if I can have a second please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Grassi, any discussion? Let's call the roll.
Tom Hagg?
Aye.
Lori Knessky?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Jennifer Hardin?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you all very much.